All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you guys for joining our November work session. So we're going to get started. I'm filling in for Mr. Ritter. He's traveling back to town today. So let's go ahead and look down our agenda for next week. Mr. Kane, you have our invocation and pledge. We'll approve a few different minutes, approve the agenda, go over the committee report. Did you guys go out yet?
We haven't. Okay, we'll get that going.
All right, sounds good. And then we'll have some superintendent recognitions. Jumping to the department reports.
Yeah, so I was posting for you there for your reviews, communications report. We also on number of the third had our sixtieth day of school student in Roland County. That's posted there for your review as well. We are inching ever closer to fifteen thousand students on on the third of November. We were at fourteen nine thirty two.
Wow. So unless you have questions, I'm still posting for your reviews. Thank you, sir. Ms. Houston?
Good evening, you guys. I have the invoices paid between ten and twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars for the month of November. The first one is B and H video photo video. It was paid out of Capital Projects thirteen thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars for three hundred and fifty, three hundred and fifty docking stations for teacher laptops, and that's district wide. The next one is Pathful Inc., paid out of the general fund thirteen thousand one hundred dollars. That was a virtual job shadow, shadow subscription license, and that was for all the middle schools, Russell, Bear Creek, Hammond Morris, and Westside. The next one is Ed Mentum out of Consolidated Funds twenty-one thousand ninety-five dollars. It was for exact, exact path reading for Kennedy Elementary School. The next one is IXL Learning, paid out of the Consolidated Funds ten thousand eight hundred dollars, and it was for a subscription for grades two through five math and ELA for six hundred students for Yargo Elementary School. Tyler Technologies paid out the general fund twelve thousand two hundred and eighty-four, and this is our Tyler Systems Management Service Support, and that's district wide. That's our financial software. Reality Works out of the Perkins Grant thirteen thousand sixty-four dollars, and that's for veterinarian science training tool. That was for Bassa. Qualit, Qualitrix LLC was paid out of S or three funds eighteen thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars for a survey subscription district wide. That's how helps us with our surveys that we do. North Georgia, NGPG Sports Medicine, that's the hospital, paid out the general fund eleven thousand dollars, and this is for athletic trainer services for the 2022, 2023 school year, and this is fifty percent of it. We pay twenty-two thousand dollars a year for trainer services at Bassa, Winder Bear High School, and Appalachia High School. Ballot Schools paid out of Capital Projects twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars, and that's for Media Center Books at Bassa. Brightly Software paid out the general fund sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars for asset essentials, and this is the maintenance work order software. That's district wide. Jigsaw Learning IDEA Special Education Funds thirteen thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars, and that's instructional license and subscriptions for the Jigsaw Learning Program, and that's district wide. Sayers Technology paid out the general fund seventeen thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars is for firewall support renewal, and that's district wide. And then the last one, Hugh Graphics and Apparel paid out the general fund twelve thousand four hundred and twenty dollars for safety gear, rain jackets for transportation. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ready, Mr. Purnam?
Good evening. As we show you some progress photos there of our new elementary school, just want to share a few pieces of information with you. We, we stand up here and we talk about lead times and delays and, and supply chain issues. And I know you all know that that's real, and we're not just saying that stuff, but we got our water source heat pumps, which are the heat and air units that serve the classrooms a couple of weeks ago. That was an eight-month lead time. Before COVID, we'd be looking at three to four months to get that, that type of equipment on site. Switchgear, emergency generators, those are at about a fifty to sixty-week lead time, so over a year, a year or more. Roofing material, a year. Steel, six months. So just now more than ever, it's important for us to, to stay out ahead of this and plan and, and just be proactive to make sure we get our stuff and, and that we can keep rocking along. So I appreciate the board, superintendent, and executive cabinet for allowing us to, to, to follow that construction manager model and do these early release packages for grading and structural steel and roof materials because it, it really helps quite a bit when it comes to this sort of thing. But there, there's some photos there. Like I say, we're moving right along on site there and, and in the building. We've got, there's the heat pumps and so we're, we're pleased with the progress of the elementary school. We've also got some photos here for you of work we're doing on our ag site. Yeah. So we started with the after pictures, but that particular building there was in really bad shape. And, and we took that building and got a new roof on it, worked on the inside as well as you can see there. And, and really turned that thing around. I'm told that cow's name is Skylar. Skylar's helping us keep an eye on the project out there. There's the after picture of the outside of the building, and it, it only looked worse on the inside. But I just say all that to say we, we took a shell and it helped us a lot in terms of cost, not having to go through all the different approval processes and inspections and things like that. We already had a building there. We just worked on what we had. And so I think that's, that's going to be something really nice for, for kids in our ag programs to, to use. Okay, and here's our, our Bassa two site. And so we're getting some of those initial things done with soil erosion, silk fence, ponds, and the job site trailer. So we can begin to start moving the, the earth around out there and get that thing out of the ground. And that's, that's an update on where we are today. If y'all have any questions?
Oh, I guess the, you, you talked earlier about building materials, lack of a better term, just to encompass everything and trying to stay ahead of that. Do you see us being able to continue to stay ahead of that?
I think so, and we'll, we'll get into that a little bit with some recommendations we have coming up on the elementary schools.
Right.
But, you know, we, it's out there, it's a real thing, but, you know, we're trying to just use different tactics and, and ways of going about it to, to stay ahead, and I think we'll be able to continue to do that, at least as it currently is. Now if it, if things, you know, get worse, it may be different, but, but as it stands now, I think so.
Just perfect what y'all do and, and keeping up with the trends and, and having material available. So I mean, it's, it's one thing for us to pass all this stuff, but if you can't get stuff to put a building up, it's, it's tough.
Absolutely. And it's, it's weighing on everybody. I know, you know, the furniture and the school food nutrition and IT, I mean, everybody's facing that and, and working hard to try to combat it.
Thank you. Stevens is here to ask you, but we're on time and under budget, right?
That's correct. Yes.
She'd be so proud of you.
Yes, we'll get that on the record from Miss Stevens. We are.
Good evening. I have the pleasure of introducing our graduation specialist, and they have a report for us this evening to share the incredible work that they have been doing with students as they approach the podium. Amber Hagie works with Bassa. Allison Kramer works with Winder Bear High School and the schools in that cluster, and Mr. Andy Dean works with Appalachia High School and the schools in that cluster. So welcome to the podium graduation team. They all begin with an A, so sometimes I call them triple A. I call them the A team, but I present to you our graduation specialist.
Good evening, guys. Thank you so much for your time. As Dr. Motten said, my name is Allison Kramer, and I serve the Winder Bear High School cluster. Over the next few minutes, we are going to look forward to presenting the work that we have done and will continue to do in our jobs as graduation specialists.
I'm Amber Hagie. I'm the graduation specialist at Bassa and all kinds of different.
And I'm Andy Dean, and I am the graduation specialist for Appalachia.
In our role, we work with at-risk and credit deficient students who tend to have become disenchanted with, or have negative relationships with school. As graduation specialists, our primary role is to create a clear plan for all of our students at the respective high schools for an on-time graduation with their cohort and also have a plan for post-secondary success. In 2022, Barrow County's graduation rate was eighty-nine point forty-nine percent versus the state graduation rate of eighty-four point one percent. And so this makes us proud to be Barrow bold and the success of our students here in our county. We believe these numbers reflect the work we did in our roles as well as the support or through the support that they received in our role and the supports that we put in place with our team in our roles. So to paint a picture of the work we're doing, I'd like to share a success story of one of our students. The student pictured is Caleb. He's currently a third-year student at Winder Bear High School. He came to us last year's end of the second semester and only had earned three and a half credits by the end of the school year, so he was really far behind. And so he didn't really have a great relationship with school. He was skipping school regularly to play basketball, sleeping in class, and just avoiding pretty much any interaction with teachers that, that he could. So I spent some time at the end of last year just getting to know him, figuring out like what makes him tick, what is he interested in, and found out that his goal is to be a welder in life. And so that future career role made him a perfect candidate for option B that we have here in our county. So working with the counselors, academic interventionists, teachers, parents, we crafted a clear plan for an on-time graduation for Caleb. Since the first conversation with him and formally moving him to option B, he's done a complete one-eighty. He is actively taking part in class. He's doing what he needs to in his academics. It's not always perfect. He hits bumps in the road, but he's persevering through them when that happens because he knows he has a plan, he can achieve his goal, and that there is an entire team in our building that's just there to support him. He's already completed one class in credit recovery and is on track to do even more this semester. And by the time this semester is over, he'll have more than doubled the credits he had at the end of last school year. He's enrolling in Linear Tech in the spring, and will be graduating with his class if he keeps down this track at the end of next school year. So we're really excited. And so if I think back to last school year, the numbers here say that I had fifty-one students that were seniors on my caseload last year, and there are so many success stories just embedded in that number. And of those fifty-one students, ninety-four percent went on to graduate and walk last year at our graduation.
So I would like to share a story about a young lady that I've worked with for the last couple of years, Haley. So Haley, at the end of second or first semester sophomore year had zero credits. Had a pretty rocky year last year, and I kept trying to work with her, trying to work with her, and she was resistant to it. I just don't think she really trusted people at school. With some perseverance, was finally able to get her to, to sit down and talk with me and kind of talk about what her future looked like. And like Ms. Kramer said, we shared, I talked with her about the option B diploma track. And she kind of realized, wait a minute, hold on a second. Here I am sitting in December with zero credits. I might actually be able to graduate with my cohort. Still a rocky spring last year, but as she kind of started to see the vision and came to school this year, she has a vision for success. So she is going to enroll at Linear Tech in the Early Childhood Education Program. She's expressed to me that she wants to either be a school counselor or a child psychologist. And currently she is sitting with three As and a high C. It just slipped down in Algebra One. So, but this, it's, it's just remarkable to see the turn that, that she's made in her life. I'll take a little bit of credit for that, but not all the credit. There's some other things that have happened with her that have just kind of helped her blossom. The Appalachia team is fantastic with her and just really proud to see that, that the work that she's done. And just looking forward to seeing her continue to grow and develop. So Ms. Kramer makes me look a little bit bad. I had forty-seven students last year, I'm a twenty-two cohort, and only seventy-three percent of those students did actually graduate. I'll save the caveat just for, for, for time's sake, but I'm hoping that number one increase this year, but in spite of that seventy-three percent with the kids that I worked with, Appalachia still had a ninety-one percent graduation rate last year. And I do think that the work that, that I did helped keep that over that ninety percent mark in spite of that seventy-three percent right there.
I think you're doing fine.
I would like to share a success story about current senior Jackson McCormick. As you know, Bassa is graduating on first class this year, so I did not have any seniors last year, but he was once at risk of not graduating with his classmates. He faced some really challenging times at home, and he had failed Algebra One and Biology in his sophomore year. Although Jackson comes from a single parent home where dad is supportive and holds high expectation for his son, he still struggled with feelings of self-doubt and frustration. And he was overwhelmed knowing that he had two academic classes to pass in order to graduate. I met Jackson at the beginning of his junior year, and together we developed a plan to get him back on track for graduation coming up in May of 2023. I'm proud to report that with the support of his father, teachers, myself, counselors, and administration, Jackson has been able to retake and pass those academic classes that he once failed. When interviewed for the article that was posted on the Barrow County School System website, Jackson said, having someone to guide me through high school and help me pass all of my classes has made such an impact on me as a student and allowed me to be a better student. For example, when I was failing several of my classes in my junior year, Miss Hagie helped push me to get the missing assignments completed and turned in and to do test corrections to help bring my grade up. Success stories like Jackson are our wine. Our success stories are the answer when we are asked, why are you a graduation specialist? There's nothing more gratifying than seeing a student overcome obstacles and find success. Since Bassa did not have a graduating class this year, I'm going to share my current numbers for the class in their junior year. By the end of their junior year, ninety-two percent of my current seniors were on track for graduation. Next slide, please. As graduation specialist, we have many roles and responsibilities. Our primary role is to work with off-track students to discuss the progress they are making and the challenges that they are facing. An off-track student is defined as a student who has failed one or more academic classes as well as those who are credit deficient for being in the current grade level. Most of our students come to us with a negative relationship with school. We work really hard to reestablish trust and confidence in these students so that they have a better attitude about school and a motivation to learn. We communicate with parents and guardians of the students on our caseload, keeping them informed and up to date on their child's progress. We also collaborate with teachers and other support staff to make plans to help students stay ahead on their current work as well as get caught up on missing work.
So another role that we serve on top of the, the items that Miss Hagie mentioned is that we work with, with our partner Foothills Charter High School to help our students that, that are off-track recover credits. Appalachia High School has a policy where they do not receipt students, so we've got a pretty large number, a larger number than Bassa and Winder Bear do. Students enrolled at Foothills, I think we're somewhere around one hundred and thirty right now. And so I kind of, I worked, monitor those kids, make sure that they're progressing the way they need to progress, that they will graduate with their cohorts. Dragging them through the mud and harassing them incessantly, but that's kind of the work that we do is just keep at the kids, keep at the kids. We also communicate with the parents of those students that are trying to recover those credits at Foothills so that they're involved in the process as well as their child's work in towards graduation. And in our, in our schools, we've also just kind of, you know, in the natural progression of the job, have become familiar faces to the staff, faculty there, and teachers will come up to us and speak with us about a student that may not be on our caseload that they say, you know, okay, could you just take a look at this kid, maybe meet with him or her and talk about a, a plan for success? And so we really become part of each of our schools' families, and I think that we're a valuable and trusted resource that people have started to lean on more and more. So this small chart right here breaks out our students that we're working with based on school and cohort. So that's each of the schools along with the alternative education program. In the bottom right, you can see the total number of students that we're serving, which is two hundred and seventy, which while a pretty small percentage of all the students in Barrow County, it's still a pretty sizable number considering the nature of the population of the students that we work with. These kids need pretty intensive interventions. And, you know, you kind of have to keep a thumb on them a lot, so it's, it's a lot of work. And also do want to note that these numbers are a snapshot because the population that we work with is pretty fluid. These students will transfer to Foothills full-time. They may also just move to another district. And so that's just kind of the, the nature of the work.
So in addition to our primary roles, I would like to highlight some of the other activities and events that we are part of. One thing we're super proud of is our student mentor club. All three of us started at each of the respective high schools. These clubs were established to pair a responsible senior with an at-risk freshman in order to provide encouragement and support during that pivotal freshman year. Next slide. So these same seniors from our mentor clubs have also been involved with going into a county elementary school to read to children. And this has allowed our youngest learners to be inspired by our current graduating class to be lifelong readers. In the spring of each year, we help organize and coordinate the annual eighth-grade tours. These tours allow eighth graders to not only visit their future high school, but it also allows them the opportunity to discover the dual enrollment opportunities at Sims and Linear Tech. In the spring, the Barrow County School System partners with Barrow Economic Development to put on the ready-to-work job fair. We assist the work-based learning coordinators with this event. Last year, there were over fifty career opportunities represented, and over a hundred of our seniors attended the event. We also collaborate with other agencies like Barrow County Family Connection and the Barrow County School System Mentor Program. Both of these provide support and services for our students.
So we want to zoom in a little bit on some other work that we did last year that was part of the strategic plan. We worked with stakeholders across the county to develop this learner profile. This is something we're really, really proud of. And so basically what this is, is a learner profile, sometimes called a graduate profile. We've chosen learner profile because we want it to be with the kids K through twelve. Is essentially it's a set of competencies that we want students to have when they walk out of Barrow County High School when they graduate. So as you can see, we're thinking critically, solving problems, collaborating, showing empathy, and demonstrating resilience. These five competencies came from conversations with instructional coaches, assistant principals, teachers, school governance teams. And we kind of whittled them down to these five, and this is something that was presented a couple of weeks ago, a month ago, to district leadership, was received really, really well. We're really proud of it. I think Dr. Michael's pretty proud of it as well. And, and looking forward to rolling this out, which Ms. Kramer's going to kind of talk about the rollout plan. Looking forward to rolling this out next year and really using it as a leverage point to help develop our students into more well-rounded people. Next slide. So, and as I mentioned, this was part of the learner profile, or excuse me, the learner profile was part of the strategic plan, and then moving forward, we'll also add a teacher, a leader, and a parent profile as well. But we felt like this was kind of the first step as we wanted to see what do we want our students to look like? So I'm really looking forward to seeing how this is used across the district to help develop our students.
As I said, the learner profile is the forward-facing document. You can go to the next slide for me. Is the forward-facing document for the stakeholders to see the skills that we want our graduates to possess when they enter the workforce and become contributing members of society. But the instructional framework is the document that we are using to get this out to our teachers. We don't want the learner profile to just be something that's fluff that isn't used to actually improve student success. So the competencies are in the forefront on this document as well, around the edge of the document as well as in the work session portion to ensure that all of these competencies are something that teachers are aware of. We've embedded them into the learner profile, and this is in hopes to allow teachers to see how and when to use these competencies and how they can be intertwined in their daily lessons to ensure that we're achieving the goal of preparing our students for the future. And as we said, we've already presented this to the district leadership team, and it's already begun to be presented at school leaderships, and they're presenting it at their individual schools, but there should be a public rollout beginning in the spring of 2023 to the community. The document of the learner profile is going to be shared out via email to families. And then we're going to begin a social media campaign that will feature one of the competencies every week with an in-depth look of what does that competency mean? And we're hoping to get faculty and parent buy-in where they join into that social media campaign. They give us examples of how does this competency look? How are students showing these qualities at home? And/or how do the teachers teach these in the classroom so that way we can really make sure that this is something that we're doing and making successful for our kids and our community? So as you can kind of see, we do a variety of things, and day by day, everything we do kind of varies. But it's all student-centered. What we're doing is to, designed to help students reach a goal of success for an on-time graduation and a clear vision for their future. So these roles have already been vital in the success of so many Barrow County students and will only continue to have a positive impact on them the more that time goes on. So we appreciate your time, and if y'all have any questions for them.
I guess just a comment that I'm glad to see that y'all are going into the elementary school and the middle schools because I just wonder how many kids give up before they get to high school. And I know that's always been the thing, and just appreciate the work I'll do. And two hundred, two hundred and seventy students, that's a lot for.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that, too. The, the work that y'all are doing, we focus on high school, but we're, they, you know, working with middle schools and elementaries is, you know, key, too, and y'all are doing an amazing job with that also, and looking forward to seeing even more of that. It's a great presentation.
Thank you, guys.
Thank y'all.
All right, Ms. Banks, do you have anything?
No, it's time.
All right, Dr. Thompson?
Good evening, everyone. So in this section, we highlight areas of the strategic plan that we have begun to implement, or in some cases, as we're going to do tonight, to give an update on an initiative that has already begun. In this case, under the strategic plan in academics and student success, one of our strategic initiatives is to implement a developmentally appropriate social emotional learning curriculum in all of our schools. We've had it social emotional learning curriculums in our schools for several years now, but we've never had a consistent curriculum, one that fits with all the various areas that we wanted that program to cover. The board was gracious enough in June of this year to fund the Character Strong Curriculum, which has been rolled out in all of our schools. And here tonight to give you an update on how that has gone, and some of the things we've learned on that are the two individuals who have helped to spearhead that program, Dr. Ken Green, Assistant Superintendent for Support Services, and Dr. Christina Lowe, Director of Student Services.
Really, at the district level, a lot of the credit goes to Dr. Lowe. She's led the team that involve people from all the schools. Really at the district level, a lot of the credit goes to Dr. Lowe. She's led the team that involve people from all the schools in terms of uh, selecting this particular curriculum and getting it, um, rolled out and implemented, but I get to share a little bit of the glory with her this, the evening. Um, but I will tell you upfront, she's done, she and the partners at the schools have done most of the work. Um, so I want to just, uh, as Matt has already done, just let you know that this is a direct outgrowth from our strategic plan. You can find it under academic and student success. The goal is to ensure all students have access to a safe and positive learning environment, which will then result in healthy social development, increased academic outcomes and improved graduation rates. And the action steps, three of the action steps are specifically addressed by the Character Strong Program. Um, we believe that this functions as a, uh, bully prevention program. It helps us to lead students to achieve the competencies in the five core areas of, uh, self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills and responsible decision-making. Um, uh, some old ways of talking about those, maybe soft skills or character traits and those kinds of things that we've been working on as long as I've been in education. Um, but these, uh, five overarching competencies have been proven to be, uh, things that students need. And then to monitor the progress of the implementation and the success of the program. Dr. Lowe will come and talk to you a little bit more about some of the, uh, structure in the program and then we'll let you know how well it's been received.
Okay, so we wanted to go over with you again and recap Character Strong and its components with you all. So here on the screen, you say, you see kindergarten to fifth grade. So this is the elementary version and it's actually called Purposeful People. And it ties together a monthly character trait and the competencies you see there on the screen. So the competencies are all vertically aligned kindergarten through fifth grade. And then the outcomes are there on the right side and those are well-being, engagement and belonging. So I wanted to share with you just a quick little example of how it ties together a character trait and the competency we want kids to know. So at one of our schools at the beginning of the year, they were going over the monthly character trait, which was respect. And so one of the lessons that was embedded in that month was learning how to value the perspective of others. And so there were two little boys who were getting into a little bit of an argument, um, but they thought back to the lesson that they had earlier that week and they're like, you know what? We can value each other's opinions. We can agree to disagree and they shook hands. These little kids, they shook hands and they went on about their day. So I think that's a really great way to, an example to see how we're tying in that character straight trait of respect with the competency of conflict resolution. So that's what Character Strong was trying to do for the little ones. The sixth through twelfth grade is a secondary version and it doesn't focus as much on specific character traits, but rather on knowing and doing um, specific competency. So you can see there on the, on the graphic, it shows knowing and doing. Those are all vertically aligned and then it goes over to those outcomes again, well-being, engagement and belonging. What I think is really cool about this is that we just learned about our learner profile and it ties into this beautifully. So you can see that emotion regulation that's there under doing, that ties into demonstrating resilience. The empathy and compassion that ties into showing empathy. And then if you jump to the bottom, the goals, habits, leadership and teamwork, all those I would argue tie into thinking critically, solving problems and collaborating. So it wasn't planned that way, but it's great that Character Strong really bolsters what we're trying to do with our learners um, and the competencies we want our bearable graduates to have. So the last couple of weeks, we've been collecting feedback from our schools. You've got a lot of positive feedback and Dr. Green is going to go over the elementary feedback with all of you.
Um, you see the comments that are listed there. There's some, uh, things that we've just tried to distill down for you. Um, I will tell you that it is a, a particular joy of mine that when I'm in the school, if somebody tracks me down to specifically tell me something, um, that's going well or that they like, then that really makes me feel, uh, good because I know that it was important enough for them to track me down. And that has happened with the Character Strong program. I've had an opportunity to be in some of the schools this fall and have had folks, um, just come up to me, just uh, know that I was in the building and want to make sure that they told me how much they enjoyed the Character Strong program. So I'll let you read the specific, uh, comments that were made from teachers and parents. Um, but I do want to point out this last comment on that fourth bullet there because this is really what I think it's all about. Says, as the teacher, what I've enjoyed most is that these lessons have provided the framework for important conversations, learning opportunities and teachable moments. It's not just a curriculum that provides, uh, particular responses and, and that sort of thing. What it does is create the opportunity for uh, learning in the moment, as Dr. Lowe was saying earlier with the students that recalled what they had learned in a lesson prior and put that into play. And so, uh, here's a teacher that's telling us that they recognize that what this does for them is to provide them the opportunity and the framework to have those important conversations at teachable moments. Um, and that the content of the lessons, actions that have consequences, naming emotions, emotional advocacy, dealing with disappointment. Who hasn't had to do that lately? Um, talking about what's in your control and what isn't, that those are all content areas that can have some very rich conversations um, around them to help us be able to apply this, not just in the classroom, but just in life. And, um, we, I've been pulling, uh, activities out of Character Strong to use with adults in meetings that I facilitated. We use this in our district leadership meetings. Um, I'm using it in our rezoning meetings and pulling activities, um, out to just provide a foundation for for us. And so we're trying to, um, really implement this with a broad, broad stroke. And Dr. Lowe will share with you some additional feedback with that.
These are just some photos that were shared, um, on, I think the character trait was gratitude. It was, uh, during the month of November and these are from some of our elementary schools there. So we just wanted to share some of that with you all. Um, and so from the secondary schools, we got a lot of the same, um, type of positive feedback, um, that it's relevant to students, applicable to daily student life, that it's an effective tool in helping support our students in an area that's vital to their success. Um, one of the teachers submitted that they had their students facilitate Character Strong lessons and that they're responding well to each other. I thought that was really neat. Um, and then from the students, um, two of them submitted, um, I have learned some life skills such as how to listen to a speaker and understand people better. And I've learned how to breathe to calm down when I feel anxious. And so those two competencies are self-awareness and resiliency. And so that's really what we want our kids to know. So we're proud of our schools for doing an excellent job so far of rolling this out. Um, we know that it's been a really big task, but they've done incredible work with it. Um, but we don't want to set it and forget it. So we want to continue, uh, working on this. So we're going to have ongoing meetings with the original committee that selected this program, um, for recommendation to all of you. Uh, we're going to create a process for fidelity checks to make sure that we're implementing, um, that we're checking the the fidelity of implementing the programs. Um, and then we want to look at data that's available to us to measure the impact of the program. We do know that impact can take several years to see and that's normal with something like this, but we want to go ahead and figure out what data is available so we can go ahead and start guys gathering that over the next few years to see if there's positive trends in behavior. Um, and so I think that wraps us up.
All right, jumping into new business, John St. Clair.
Thank you.
I promise not taking more than forty-five minutes. Servers at five of our schools are approaching end of life and need to be replaced. An RFP was posted and nineteen responses were received. Uh, AAIT Pro did not meet the server specifications required in the RFP and were disqualified. Low bid respondent Dell, Round Rock, Texas, met in terms of the RFP. They've done similar business with, before, and they are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. Financial impact is thirty thousand six seventy-five forty from ITS SLOSS funds. The superintendent recommends authorizing the purchase of Dell servers from low bid respondent Dell of Round Rock, Texas in the amount of thirty thousand six seventy-five forty.
Any questions?
Thank you. The PDC server room server infrastructure is also end of life and due for replacement. This is the environment that houses the services that run our network, manage our iPads, our Chromebooks, printing services, phone systems and a slew of other services. There are seventy-five different services that all run on this infrastructure. An RFP was posted and twelve vendors responded. Low bid respondent Dell of Round Rock, Texas, met the terms of the RFP. They've done similar business with the district before and they are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. Financial impact is seventy-one thousand eight sixty-five oh four from district IT funds. I'm going to ask the board's, uh, indulgence, uh, if you would consider, uh, voting on this one at the work session today, at the, called board meeting today. Um, if we can get them on time, we can do some work over the, uh, winter break um, and save my staff from having to do some wicked work. So I'm hoping to try to get these quicker. Uh, the superintendent recommends awarding the purchase of Dell Power Edge six fifty servers to low bid respondent Dell of Round Rock, Texas in the amount of seventy-one thousand eight sixty-five oh four.
What were those lives to look at?
So what would they think?
Uh, I'm thinking, uh, vacation in the Bahamas. I'm not sure.
Hey, that's a red something ball.
There's always someone who, uh, shoots for the moon and I don't understand why they do it every time, but.
Can't blame a man for trying.
Yep.
Full vote on it.
All right, thank you. Um, let's see. Okay, so this one is E-rate, uh, slightly more complicated. Uh, and just as a refresher for anybody who doesn't recall, E-rate is the federal program at which we receive funding for various initiatives based on our free reduced lunch count. Uh, we submit for it every year. We go through a whole process. Uh, and then we find out what we've been awarded. And either we get a discount on the purchase of whatever it is upfront or we get a rebate, uh, we request a rebate and get the money, uh, afterwards. So the district's contract for wide area network services, or WAN, which is the connection between each school and the central office, is how schools get to the student information system, match system, internet and so forth. Uh, is at the end of its life in, uh, the end of this fiscal year and a new contract is needed. An RFP was posted and four vendors responded. Uh, we again seek and expect to receive E-rate funding for this contract uh, as we have been awarded in previous years for previous contracts. If awarded, the district expects to receive between a seventy to eighty percent discount on these services. That's contingent on our free and reduced lunch count. It's looking like we're actually probably going to be at seventy percent because our free reduced lunch numbers are a little lower than they were previously to, prior to COVID. Um, however, E-rate award notifications can come anytime between July twenty twenty-three, January twenty twenty-four, and I've even seen them come later in the year. So we're not going to know if we're going to be awarded the discount nor the amount at this time prior to us needing to commence work. So all costs presented in this, uh, item are presented without the discount. So to qualify for E-rate funding, you do a competitive bidding matrix, uh, to score each entry. So cost is mandated to be the most important factor for E-rate, not the only factor. So you can have multiple other factors, uh, and they can even override the cost if combined their weighted score is greater than the cost score. Um, so the, the four respondents, uh, numbers are shown as below, but in quick summary, the low bit response and the overall highest score response both happen to be Comcast. Comcast has satisfactorily done similar business with the district before. They're our current wide area network provider. They are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database and they are a vendor in good standing with the E-rate system. It's important to note that we must have a wide area network to function. And so if for some reason we are not funded E-rate or if we're funded less than we think, regardless, we must be prepared to assume the full cost of services and proceed regardless of E-rate award. Uh, also contract pricing is set for the lifetime of the contract uh, with a, uh, menu of different levels of capacity and a price for each level of capacity. So that if we bring additional schools or facilities online during the five-year term of the contract, we're locked into the pricing that we're getting at the beginning of the contract. Comcast will provide services to that new location for an additional recurring cost based on the contracted price. Uh, the financial impact is six hundred seventeen thousand eight hundred forty-nine dollars forty cents from the district telecommunications budget. That's over a five-year period. If we are awarded E-rate funding at eighty percent, that's our out-of-pocket will be roughly a hundred twenty-three thousand over the five-year period. If we are awarded E-rate funding at the seventy percent level, which I think is more likely, um, we'll be, our out-of-pocket will be a hundred eighty-five thousand over the five-year period. Our E-rate funding level can fluctuate. So if our numbers get if our numbers go up, the next year, we'll get the higher level of discount, but for right now, it's looking like probably the lower level. Uh, and if additional schools and facilities are bought online, they will incur additional costs at the set contract price. The superintendent recommends awarding the contract for wide area network services to low bid respondent Comcast in the amount of a hundred twenty-three thousand five sixty-nine and eighty-eight cents per year and authorizing the option to renew up to five years for the total cost of six hundred seventeen thousand eight hundred forty-nine and forty over the five-year period. That was a mouthful, so.
Okay, I assume that you have enough money if you don't get this rebate.
We do, we do. We, we may end up making some tougher choices about some other things down the line, but we have the funds to do.
Right. And if, if, if you don't, do we have the option of going, going through this process again?
Sure. So I mean.
We're not tied into it for five years.
No, it's, it's a renewal each year with our option. Uh, if the board just has to say we're not, we don't have the funds for it this year. Georgia law is that that ends the contract and we have to go out the bit again.
Okay, thank you.
Consent agenda.
Yes. Thank you. And my last one, uh, network switches will be required for work to be performed this summer at, uh, Bethlehem, Carolina, Wynder Elementary during renovations and for new construction in the new elementary school and for planned upgrades at the PDC maintenance and transportation facilities. An RFP was posted and four responses were received. Uh, low bit responded MXN met the terms of the RFP. They are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database and they've done some of the business with the district before. If you're feeling a bit of deja vu, I did bring this to you last month. Um, and after I brought this to you at the work session, we discovered that the low bid respondent, who also was MXN at that time, had not included, uh, PDC maintenance and transportation because I initially posted the bid with just the schools. And then we subsequently amended the bid to include the administrative facilities and they had not seen that part. So we, we mulled over bringing it back to you at the board meeting and explaining the error and correcting the data, um, but thought it was just cleaner to waive the, the whole process, put it out to bid again, which we did, and I'm bringing it back to you now. Um, MXN's price here is the low bid, both on this bid and the prior bid. So the superintendent recommends authorizing the purchase of Aruba network switches from low bid respondent MXN of Woodstock, Georgia in the amount of two hundred forty-nine, two hundred forty-six thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars from SLOSS and ITS in construction budgets.
All right, consent agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, for item number five, um, the superintendent recommends renewing the district's partnership with Social Empowerment Center for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year subject to a total authorization of thirty-three thousand dollars. The Social Empowerment, uh, Center provides mental health services to our students. I believe this will be the fourth year that we've, uh, had a partnership, um, with them. Um, they actually function as the sole provider for the Georgia Apex Program, which is a statewide program that, uh, is working to increase um, access to mental health services for school-aged, um, youth. They've been working, providing school-based mental health services in our school, I think now since two thousand, uh, nineteen. Um, these funds are focused in three particular areas, um, to, uh, pay for underinsured students whose insurance, um, would not cover mental health services, but to provide, um, services, uh, access to mental health services, to provide parent support services for parents of high-risk students and a summer enrichment programming for high-risk students and parents. Um, the breakdown of the funds would be twenty-four thousand from Title Four, three thousand dollars from our McKinney-Vento grant and six thousand from ARP funds. And this is a maximum amount. We actually pay per student up to the maximum amount of the agreement, which is thirty-three thousand dollars.
That's in agenda. Thank you, Dr. Green.
Got one more. Um, usually we're advised not to make a policy when a law exists that says the same thing. But I think I've come to you now, this is the fourth or fifth time that the laws that the Georgia legislature passed this spring that were signed into law specifically said that local education agencies must provide a policy. So I think this is the last one in which that is the case. Um, this is referring to policy IKBC materials harmful to minors complaint resolution process. This is a brand-new policy for us. We've always had a complaint resolution process for anyone who had concerns over any of our media center materials or curriculum, that sort of thing. Um, but the law went into a good bit greater detail about what those, um, complaint process must have. Um, and so we are bringing to you this particular, um, policy. This, my, this policy that we're asking you to put on the table, um, mirrors the language in the law. It mirrors the model policy put out by the Georgia School Board. It mirrors the model policy put out by the Georgia School Boards Association and the model policy put out by the Georgia Department of Education. Because all of them just follow the wording in the law. Just if you'd like to kind of walk you through this, it talks about how a parent would. First of all, it defines what this is considered harmful to minors. You can read that there. And then the requirements, it talks about how complaints can be submitted. What level of detail needs to be provided? It provides a timeline for when the principal or the principals designate would need to. Take to review the complaint and do a reasonable investigation. It outlines that the principal would then. Confer with meet with the person making the complaint. To talk through the particular concerns and then the this the principal will make an initial. Decision about whether to restrict or remove the materials that are complained about. After that decision's been made, then the complainants could then appeal to the Board of Education. When they appealed to the Board of Education, they have an opportunity to address the board during a meeting to talk about their complaints. Ultimately, if it is appealed to the board, the board would make a decision about whether to restrict access to or remove entirely. The material believed to be harmful to minors. If the board decides to keep that material in place, then we have to post it on our website. So that folks will see that we have reviewed and determined that. The particular material that was complained about. Was not bound to meet the definition for harmful to minors. So again. This just follows the, excuse me, wording in the law. And so the superintendent recommends placing policy IKBC. Materials harmful to minors complaint resolution process. On the table for public review until the next scheduled meeting of the Board of Education.
Is this new, Dr. McMichael? This procedure? Like if if somebody brings to the attention, say a, say a. Parent comes to Derek and says, I don't like this book in the library.
No, it's not really new. It's just there've been a few details added. We've always had a complaint process.
But if they come to us and we approve it, it has to go on the website saying that we said it was okay.
That part I think is probably.
The timeline, there's some of the specifics about the process are new. We've we've had a complaint resolute or complaint resolution process. It was one line in our policy that basically.
I didn't think this was it.
This is not it. This is what was past.
The end. I didn't think that was part of it.
Oh, no, 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 that that in fact is new. Every everything in the in the in the policy is. New. Our complaint resolution process was was not as formal and detailed and timeline oriented. And it didn't require us posting things on the website. That that part's all new.
Yeah, so this is basically taking what we've had and adding some more steps to it.
Time lines and.
Okay, I thought so. I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Dr. Frank.
It's huge, Tony.
Sorry, Derek. I was just looking at you. You were the first principal. Don't sit across from me and you won't get your.
Little control that we want.
All right, tonight, the superintendent recommends the board deciding on a one time retention incentive payment for staff and contracted custodians. To be paid in January twenty twenty three. The net cost is going to be determined by you, the board. Applicable applicable funds will have a budget adjustment for the amounts. So employees and contract custodians will be eligible for retention incentive payment if they have been employed by the school system or contracted with their custodial contractors. Ninety calendar days as of January ninth, twenty twenty three. They must also be active employees or custodial contractors on the day of the check. This is a retention ba- payment. Retention is part of our strategic plan. So this goes along with that. Employees or custodial staff that are current employees or current custodial contractors that have not fulfilled the ninety calendar day rule. Will receive their funds once they have completed the ninety days if it is before June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. And before their specific employment contract or worked it work year ends for fiscal year twenty twenty three. Special rules will apply to those on FMLA or workers comp and percentages will be applied to less than full time employees. And certain regularly regular hourly employees will get a flat two hundred and fifty dollars. Those are people such as our. And some of some of our interns that come in daily and our lunchroom monitors that come in daily. So we are asking. Showing you an incentive. Bonus or retention paint retention incentive payment, we have to call it that, of either five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars. Five hundred dollars will cost the system one million, one hundred and forty eight thousand dollars. And a thousand dollars will cost the system two million, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. These amounts will either come out of the general fund fund balance. The respective funds IDEA, JROTC, pre-K consolidated funds. And we might might try to find some funds in the CARES Act. If once we go over the that money and see what's going to be spent and what is is no longer needed.
I'd say if we have the money, we should do a thousand. Where do you guys sign?
If that's you're you're in charge, right? You know, as we always would say, yes, then you say, no, I know.
I would I wouldn't give y'all. An amount that we couldn't afford.
Right.
Typically, he's good like that.
This is, wasn't this already approved in the budget?
No, no, ma'am.
We haven't approved that before when we did the budget.
No, this is above and beyond their salary. So this would just be one time in January. You know, we had, we pay them around, I forget what day it's going to be, but we pay them around December twenty first. Then they don't get their other check until January thirty first. So. Over the past couple of years, we've been able to, the board has approved a budget to happen in January to kind of get them through that six week period.
And we do still have that money even though.
It's it would.
Has already started whether some people have built it yet or not.
It would come out of our fund balance. Yes, ma'am. Or our TAVT tax has come in a little bit higher than what we budgeted. So that will probably cover a big portion of it, too.
Yeah, that that's actually a good point that you brought up, though, that, you know, if. As we move into a recessionary time, we 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 will bring these to you as long as we know we can afford it. But if we may get to a point where we may not, and so I, you know, I do want, it's a good thing to have that out there that. So, you know, it becomes a.
And they're now talking about it being longer.
Worse, yeah. Maybe I had that crystal ball, be able to tell, but. You know, if it. If if we couldn't afford it and or we were overly concerned, we wouldn't bring it forward. But I mean, our folks deserve everything we can give them. We can't give it to them and and. No, I pray that they didn't come that we can't, but it it may very, very may because as we we've all been through it.
Talk about taking it on the other hand or.
Right.
We've, the board has done a great job over the past six or seven years of retaining a good fund balance. So we have a few years.
Even during the recession, we we had to do a few things here and there, but you know, we mainly handled that with attrition and some other things.
They worked hard.
To to look forward and see. You know, if we're, this recession will be like the last one, better or worse. It's hard to know, but we need to do what we can while we can.
Yeah, especially during all the sickness time. I mean, they're probably working themselves to death.
They've always worked hard and and we all know that educators.
Now they're working harder.
Overworked and underpaid since. System started and it's a little bit we can do to help offset some of that. I think we need to do it.
Jennifer, are there any employees that are not covered? I see the employees, custodial contractors. Are there any? Bodies of employees that are not?
I can't really, Cindy, can you think of anybody? I can't really think of any anybody. We may have like an intern that comes in over the summer or over Christmas. They wouldn't be covered by this. I really can't think of anybody that wouldn't be get something. All right, y'all can either decide on this next week. The amount and then approve it or whatever you want to do tonight. And you don't have to decide on it tonight, but you can decide on an amount, whatever.
You don't have to decide on it. So. Yeah, so we can talk about it and vote on it. The employee gets the four thousand dollars.
No, no, sir.
You got the 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 taxes and the fees come out of there.
Taxes, and it's just going to be the FICA tax. We don't have to worry about TRS on this. That would be another six percent out of their check. So just FICA, which is seven point six five percent.
Thanks.
Yeah, so I mean, if y'all want to take some time and think five hundred versus a thousand or do I? No, there's no way. We we've looked at it, but.
We try.
Uncle Sam and they don't get their their piece of it, yeah.
I think we tried.
None of us look good in orange.
We tried.
We're we're not volunteers.
So we can't, do we need, if we, can we not just discuss this around the table tonight so we can vote?
Do it tonight and then put it on there.
Yeah, I think we should go ahead and do it so they can know it's coming. That would be a nice Christmas surprise for our teachers. I say a thousand.
Does anybody not say a thousand?
Alright, so we have a thousand.
Thank you. All right, the next item is we are going to call a special election for East lost in March. And I have Tom Owens here, our financial advisor that will help walk us through this. Attached to this is also a couple brochures. One is an ethics brochure and those I'll give those out to all the principals and the board. And directors and it tells you what you can and can't do. To your parents and your teachers and stuff like that. We do need votes, but there's certain laws. Another one is just the FAQs about this upcoming election. And so I'll have those in paper form for you next Tuesday night. I have to make a couple adjustments on them and get it approved by executive cabinet. But without further ado, here is Mr. Owens and I will pass out his PowerPoint.
Thank you, Jennifer. She's going to hand you a presentation which is on your screen. I like to always give you a. A paper version, just if you want to make notes or maybe it's easier to see, but. Also, in the packet, there is a draft of the referendum resolution, which is the official document you would be asked to take action on. And I'll talk about some of the details of that in a moment, but if we. Refer to that document, I want you to have, you know, know where it is as well. One question on your mind, maybe why are we talking about this at this point? What we're really after is we need to. Give Joe and his team the ability to continue with their construction. If obviously, if that's pleasure board, but if that's the direction you're going to go. We have to start, he was talking about lead times. We have to start lining up the ability to borrow money in order to continue funding construction next summer. The next opportunity to have an election that would include bonds as well as a renewal of the one cent sales tax upon the expiration of the current tax. The next opportunity to have a vote is in March of twenty twenty three. From March of twenty twenty three, that there's a timetable that Jennifer has. I don't know if she handed it out or not. It is maybe not necessary, but. From the March twenty twenty three election date, you have to provide notices in the paper five weeks. We jump to that. And you have to get your notice to the Barrow County Board of Elections basically by January first in order to to start all those things in action. And so that leads us to December is really when you as a board would need to take action in order to put something on the November ballot. So I will start with this presentation. And we'll, you know, as questions come up, we'll we'll address those, but going to start with the sales tax. You are currently as a school district in East lost six. East boss six was originally slated to run for a five year period that would end in September of twenty twenty six. Your collections have grown substantially. I'll talk about that more in the next couple of pages. And so right now we're projecting that that sales tax may cease collection sometime around September of twenty twenty five. Page three just shows you a chart and you can see for twenty twenty two. You're on pace to almost collect twenty million dollars worth of sales tax this year with a good December check. You actually. May hit the twenty million dollar mark. The fourth page. Shows this in some more detail. One item to point out there is just the growth rate that you've experienced over the last five years, which is. Borderline unbelievable. Of course, you all know the way that Barrow County is growing. But you've had four years back to back to back, which are really unprecedented. Probably going back to the, you know, that period of probably two thousand five, two thousand six, which is, you know, where we saw a big growth out here previously. But the takeaway from slide four is just your most recent twelve months have produced nineteen million, seven hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and two dollars. We generally use your most recent twelve months as we're making projections going forward. One of the thing we that has to be done when we put a referendum resolution out is we've got to make an estimate about what our maximum collection from the sales tax will be. So I'm going to refer back to that nineteen million dollar number here in just a moment. I mentioned that we are. At the moment trending towards reaching the collection cap, the collection cap for the prior Splos was set at seventy five million dollars. You can kind of pretty easily see if we collected twenty million in a year, we did that five times, we did a hundred. Just looking back at page four. In in mine, everybody else's defense. We were somewhere of just shy of twelve million dollars in an annual collection when we called the last election. So we were thinking sixty fifty five to sixty. Was kind of the zero percent growth rate and seventy five. Off of that number seemed to be a pretty healthy figure. It obviously has not been. And so we're expecting the sales taxes collected in full calendar quarters. Right now, if I had to guess, I'd say four to five quarters. That could be. More or less depending on how the sales tax performs from here. There is language in the draft referendum resolution that says, and I'm paraphrasing. The new sales tax will quit upon the earlier, excuse me, will begin upon the earlier of September of twenty twenty, really October first, twenty twenty six or. The collection cap being hit on the current sales tax. So it would be seamless to start right behind this one. Obviously, we just don't know. Date certain because we don't know how the sales tax will perform over the next couple of years, but right now we're guessing that's four or five quarters early. We always look at sales tax to collect for five years. This isn't a terrible problem because it is giving us the opportunity to revoke. Set a new group of projects and ask for another bond authorization, which we need in order to keep construction. So, you know, we would like for it to go the full five years, but this isn't catastrophic, but we're we're quitting a year early. When we look at page six and some of these things we may. As we have some discussion about that referendum resolution, we'll come back to in just a moment. This is just make some projections. Right now, we think the collection period again will begin roughly the fall of twenty twenty five. Run into calendar year twenty thirty. At no growth, which is just that nineteen point seven million number multiplied five times. You'd expect about a little over ninety eight and a half million dollars worth of total collections over a five year period. What we have put into your referendum resolution is a collection cap of one hundred and fifty million. That works out to a little more than the eight and a half percent annual growth rate. And that occurred would have to occur each and every year between now and twenty thirty for us to hit that cap. And if you'll look back at page four. You know. I mean, prior to the last four years. You know, between two thousand thirteen and now, we had never grown at that. That eight and a half percent rate. So I am comfortable at some point this growth has got to taper off a little bit. I just don't know exactly when. I'm pretty confident that a hundred and fifty is a number that we probably would not hit. But if we did hit it, we'd be in the same position you are now. And it's not all bad for us to have an opportunity to kind of reset and talk about what our projects are again. And how we're going to fund everything we need to do going forward. So. The recommendation and what is appears in your referendum resolution is a hundred and fifty million dollars. And if anybody has. Strong feelings about that one way or the other, that can certainly be adjusted. Page seven. This is stuff that you you know, I'm sure, and I know that Joe Perno talks about this with you, but. For the last almost, I guess, twenty years, you have grown in terms of FDE count at about two and a half percent per year. Which works out to about four hundred kids each and every year, which is. You know, I don't know, half of a school, almost each and every year, which sort of just. Emphasizes the need to continue to build at the moment, unfortunately. Or fortunately, depending on the way you look at it. Actually, I had an FD, the October FDE count of fourteen eight eighty two and Dr. Green, I was already in a month, I've been off by fifty kids. So it was fourteen nine thirty two is what he reported just a moment ago as of November. So. Really, really growing, which you are already aware of. Page eight. Is a release. is a release, uh, put out by the Bureau of Labor Statistics. You you hear CPI, PPI quoted quite frequently. This is a release that's specific to new school building construction and the annual year-over-year inflation in that particular index, and you can see what the last two years have looked like. Uh, nine percent followed by almost eighteen percent in terms of the the increase in new school building projects. The reason I point this out to you is our borrowing costs are up, our borrowing costs are not gonna be nine or eighteen percent. Alright, so to the extent Joe's able to start and do things and and avoid some of this inflation, I don't know that this will continue necessarily. This maybe is is more anecdotal, looking backwards. The things we've been able to do because we started two and a half, three years ago have worked out well for us. We had extremely low borrowing cost on that bond and Joe was able to lock in some pro- prices a couple of years ago that we avoided some fairly drastic, uh, price increases. I know you've had some of those still, but it's why we've utilized bonds the way we have in the past, is to get out ahead of these kind of things. Control what we can control, which is we had a known borrowing cost which was pretty low and it let Joe continue on uh, with some, some construction projects that were definitely needed. Uh, page nine, and I promise this is building to a point. Um, just talks about tax-exempt interest rates. These are triple A interest rates, uh, so the, you know, very top end of credit. This is a, an index of those rates that's kept going back to about nineteen ninety-three. There's a navy blue line through the middle of that. It's what we call the yield curve. And it just shows you what is typical for interest rates, which is short-term, th- this is rates from one year all the way up to thirty years. What's typical for interest rates is that the shortest term rates are the lowest and interest rates go up over time. It just means investor has a little bit of risk the longer that they loan you money. They they require a little higher return typically, the longer they're gonna part with their money before you pay it back to them. That red line is where we are right now. But you can see short-term rates are up, they are higher than they, than what is sort of the average. But on the longer end, we're still a little below where we have been historically i- in terms of average. The reason I point that out is I'm gonna talk to you about wh- wh- one of the things we have to do, the second thing we have to do in that referendum resolution is tell the voters, where are we gonna repay principal on these bonds? And I'm gonna show you where your existing debt is. But what's coming is the majority of the principal that's in that referendum resolution falls between years sixteen and twenty. It's just because the other years are full. We we're trying to put bonds, we're trying to figure out where the payments go that you can digest them most easily. Uh, the good thing about the current interest rate environment is long-term rates really aren't much higher than short-term rates. In in terms of interest rate, there's not a tremendous penalty for borrowing longer today. Now, we obviously pay interest for a longer period of time, so there is more interest expense. But in terms of absolute rate, it's not that punitive that we're at a little bit farther today in terms of interest rate. Um, and so let's turn over to page, what's page eleven? This just shows you where your outstanding debt is today. You have bonds that mature each year from February first, twenty twenty-three out to February first, twenty thirty-seven. We've actually already set aside the funds necessary to pay those bonds on February first, twenty twenty-three. So those are are effectively paid at this point. Um, and so I would say, considering that's gone, you have about ninety-two million dollars of bonds that are currently outstanding, and you can see what the interest rates, uh, excuse what the interest payments look like on those bonds over the next, uh, fifteen years or so. If you look at page twelve, just wanna show you what we did last time and what has kind of been our historical practice. Uh, when we are faced with putting a new bond issue out, we've always got to figure out where the payments go. Uh, one of the goals of the school district has always been, what we don't wanna do is issue bonds that have to be paid by property tax. We've tried to always keep our bond structure below the level of the sales tax that you have coming in at any given point. There, now, these are all general obligation bonds. If that sales tax ever dips below our payment, there is a property tax backup for the bond payment. However, we're trying, we're always trying to keep it below that number. One, because we wanna avoid a property tax bond if at all possible. And the second reason is, we need some pay-as-you-go money to do other things. That money buys buses and technology and other, there are other needs that you have that you fund out of Sploß. And so we've, we've avoided cramming these payments down all the way up, sort of redlining them up against where the sales tax is in the past. But what that leads us to is that we kind of structure our debt where we layer some payments on top of what we have. You know, sort of a pot handle, and then the pot goes out in the five-year period just beyond where we currently have debt. Um, and so that's what we've done in the past, and if you look at page thirteen, one thing I'll point out is that when we were calling for the last election uh, in January of two thousand nineteen, I think's when we adopted a referendum resolution, you bring in about eleven point two million dollars per year. And you can see how we were just underneath that. Today, that number's moved up to almost twenty million dollars, which gives us a lot more capacity than we had just for, you know, three and a half, four years ago, in terms of where can we put bond payments? And so if you look at page fourteen, you can see some, some hollow blue bars there that demonstrate where we would propose to put the principal payments on the new bond authorization that we were, uh, that's in the referendum. The principal amount of that request is ninety-two million dollars, seven hundred and ninety-five thou- ninety-two, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Um, amortized between now and twenty forty-two. And so you can see how that fits in. Uh, we think that that should provide a significant amount of dollars for construction beginning next summer. And I've done a few things in these numbers, which I think are fairly conservative. The first is I've assumed that all the bonds are issued basically at the start of next summer, that they have to be sold completely in order to fund construction. Hopefully, we could split that up so that you don't have, you know, as much interest expense on the full amount of bonds. We're obviously gonna get Joe what he needs, but we may not have to sell the entire thing. What this is asking for is what's the maximum amount that we're are looking to have authorized, not what are you committed to issue? Um, that'll be determined with sort of, not that this number isn't based off need, but that'll, what actually gets issued will reflect whatever the reality is when you get prices in on projects next summer. We're just trying to do is create the capacity to borrow if we need it. Um, the second thing I've done is I've taken current market interest rates and I, forgive me, I did this just back, uh, the week before Thanksgiving. Rates have come down a little since then. But I put one hundred, one, a full one percent on top of what are current market rates when I ran these numbers. Uh, to just allow in, on the chance that rates go up between now and when bonds actually get sold next summer. So I hopeful, hopefully, we've been conservative kind of on two fronts. Um, but you can see what we end up with is a payment of about fifteen million dollars each and every year going all the way up to twenty forty-two. There is a little, you you'll notice that there aren't payments on these bonds between now, and and this is a year ending February first, February first, twenty twenty-six. That is because the Sploß law only allows sales tax to be used for payments on bonds that were either voted concurrently with the sales tax or that were previously incurred. So this sales tax won't really kick in until late twenty twenty-five. And so out of these bond proceeds, we've made a, what we call capitalize, we've set aside capitalized interest to cover interest on this bond between now and twenty twenty-six. That's good and it, it has a pro and a con. The pro is, or, or let's start with the con. The con is, we've set aside some money, we borrowed just to pay interest, which is not great. The pro is, our sales tax remains unencumbered for the next basically three years. There will be ten million dollars roughly as pay-as-you-go each and every year because we're not adding new payments to it. It's literally which pocket left or right are we pulling a dollar out of during that time period? Um, so I think this gives us significant pay-as-you-go dollars over the next couple of years, and it picks us up at a level that while not ideal, it is affordable to the school district once the payments come in kind of at the full level. Um, and hopefully, we see some continued growth in sales tax going forward. Page fifteen just shows us, you know, the word recession came up a moment ago. I I mentioned, we always have tried to structure your bonds in a way that where we don't feel like we're in danger that this could become a bond we have to pay out of property tax. This is just sort of backtesting our structure a little bit. From the two thousand to seven to two thousand and ten, you saw about a nineteen percent decline in your sales tax. A nineteen percent decline from where you are now would bring your uh, sales tax down to about fifteen point nine million per year versus a bond payment of about fifteen per year with the cushion that I've I've included. So there's some capacity there. Also, remember, these new bond payments don't kick in really for, for three, three and a half years. So we would have a little bit of time hopefully to recover, uh, from a recession before we have that issue, but it would obviously wipe out a lot of the pay-as-you-go funds if we did drop back down to that level. I believe over a long enough period, Barrow County is gonna continue to grow, so, um, you know, anything can happen. But just based off prior experience, this is probably, this is the best way I know uh, to kind of look and say, you know, are are we doing something that's putting us, painting us ourselves into a corner?
Um, I think it's good that we don't forget those days.
Yes, sir. We we lived them.
Yes, and, uh, those were some sleepless nights in my household.
Yes, sir.
And I'm glad to see that you cut that built-in. If the same percentages fall, then, you know, at least we have a backstop.
Right. Um, you know, I think the other, you, one possible criticism of this structure is there is more interest expense because, than we would have if we paid off more bonds in these early years. So, right, if we paid off principal faster, we would save interest on our bonds. Um, the reason I've structured them this way, if you'll look at page sixteen, is that we have old bonds with call features in them that happen every two or three years. If we ever get the feeling that we just have too much cash laying around and should accelerate some of our old debt, starting February first of next year, there's almost, there's six point six million dollars of bonds that could be prepaid. In twenty twenty-six, we're gonna hit another fourteen million dollars that could be prepaid. In twenty-seven, almost eleven million that could be prepaid. And again, in thirty, thirty-seven million, and I would expect your new bond would have a call that'll probably happen, you know, those bonds will probably about twenty thirty-three. So we have ways of accelerating bonds. What we can't do is if we, if we set bonds with the maturity date here and then we need to stretch them out, that's a big problem. We can always shorten up bonds and you've got a lot of of that capacity to do over the next, you know, eight years, to the extent we feel like, hey, we've really got extra money and we should be paying down some of this debt. We've got ways to do it. It won't be directly through this new issue. But we're set up and because we've issued bonds every few years, we sort of have what I would call a ladder of calls available to us, that we can always shorten this up and and save some interest expense if we wanted to. The flip side of that is, you can see the average coupon rates on your bonds, and we're earning more than that on our cash today. So in the current environment, I wouldn't be in any hurry to pay off any of the debt that you've got because it's really it it's very attractive debt and not costing us a lot of money compared to what we can earn just on cash, so, um, I think you're in good shape. Um, I know nobody ever wants to run out and and borrow ninety-plus million dollars. But unfortunately, I think that's, that's where we are if we're gonna keep students in the schools and keep up with your building program, uh, as currently planned, so. That's the basics, and I'm happy to take questions, and if they're concerns or or anything else, you know, I'm I'm here to talk about it, so. Just let me know.
Great presentation.
Yeah, very welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
And and like I said, I, it's always important that everybody understands what we're, what we're talking about is putting this in front of voters in March is what you're voting to do. And I, I mean, I hope they will pass it because I think it's what you need in order to to keep with your, your capital program. But you're not committing to doing, I mean, you're not committing necessarily to selling bonds. If interest rates aren't attractive, if your building program changes, there are some changes that can be made. This is the vote to go ask for the authorization, not the vote to go issue the bonds. So I just think that's important to to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
That's a good segue into the next couple items.
Joe, before you
We didn't do that on purpose.
Joe, before you get started, I would suggest we probably keep this off the consent agenda in case there's more discussion at the board meeting. Good with that?
Not so.
Yeah, keep it by itself. It's always a little cleaner. And since we have some folks that couldn't be here tonight, I might wanna chime in on it.
Okay, um, we've got a couple of guaranteed maximum price recommendations this evening. Um, the first is for Bassa two. We're asking the superintendent to recommend guaranteed maximum price of twenty-two million two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars for the classroom edition at Bassa and improvements to Bassa one. Um, just a little context to this, we, the board approved, uh, our architect in April twenty twenty in Grail Construction as our construction manager in December of twenty twenty. Uh, also approved early site package in June of twenty twenty-one at two million dollars. And so this represents, um, the the final piece to the cost of the project, and this is everything outside of the grading, um, the block, the brick, the roof, the windows, pavement, building finishes, all those mechanical, electrical, plumbing trades. Um, and so, um, the financial impact again, twenty-two million, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars funded through Sploß and state capital outlay.
Tell me again when those, uh, fields are gonna come. What year is that? We either gonna have to build some fields or we're gonna have to buy Dan McGee a car or a cruise or something, because, you know.
Right. Well, we're, we're ninety-eight percent done with the grading.
Mm-hmm.
So we're, we're nearing the completion of the grading for that, and that's, that's as far as we've gotten to at this point in terms of development is, is the grading, which is millions of dollars. Yeah, I mean, that's a, it's a big piece. It's a huge piece. Um, but, uh, no timeline on the fields going, going in place at this time.
I knew you were gonna say that.
Yeah.
I'm just kidding. I really didn't know. It was a good question.
Okay. Uh, the next item is a guaranteed maximum price for renovations to Bethlehem County Line and Winder Elementary. Uh, we're asking the superintendent to recommend a guaranteed maximum price of eleven million, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars renovation of these three schools. Um, again, our architect was approved in August of twenty-one. Charles Black Construction approved as construction manager in September twenty twenty-two. We collected some contracted pricing in November of twenty twenty-two. Uh, this will be funded through Sploß as well as state capital outlay. The scope of work, uh, here for Bethlehem and County Line, it's replacing HVAC. It's also building finishes, floors, lights, ceilings, um, paint, the same things we've been doing each summer at at other schools. Um, for Winder Elementary, it's really just that classroom AV piece, um, to kind of get them in line with what we've been doing in the other schools uh, for for classroom cameras. Um, as well as some work on the acoustics in the gym there, trying to improve that. And and Ricky, you asked a question earlier, um, a- about planning and things we're trying to do to keep up here. And and this is an example of one of those things. A couple of years ago, we were bringing this to you probably in February. Um, and so we're, we're several months ahead of that now, just backing this thing up further. Try to give time to order materials and um, and also phasing this out over two summers for a couple of reasons. One, it's just, it's a lot to try to do in one summer. But also, putting the HVAC piece on that second summer gives us a longer timeframe to collect those, those materials and and live through that lead time.
Okay.
I just wanna say, I can't put these two items on a consent agenda, and so we approve um, number eight, the special election.
Right. Right, we're wrong.
So if we don't, if eight doesn't pass, we don't even need to talk about the rest of it.
We don't need to circle back.
But we need to be following that, too.
Right.
Has there ever been a board in the history of the world that didn't pass?
And while we're talking about it, Joe.
And while we're talking about it, Joe, um as far as the BASSA two. I know it's not part of BASSA two, what's going on, what's the time frame to see all the white room for BASSA?
So this, that would be included in this BASSA two? Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So the fall of twenty four is when that building would open.
And they will have a way.
Yes. And we're working on a a temporary solution to that currently um with the school. But but this would be the permanent solution there.
Okay, so in the meantime. I mean, they don't want that permanent. So they don't have to wait.
Correct. Okay. Um our final item is uh. Playground improvements at State M Elementary School. We're asking the superintendent to recommend approval of bliss products. Located in Lithia Springs, Georgia to make additions of developmentally appropriate equipment to each of the State of Elementary Elementary School playgrounds. Um. The State M Elementary Playground Committee. Uh was looking to update and replace some of their equipment on both of their primary and upper grades playgrounds. Uh they met with us, uh Business Services, uh uh System Operations on multiple occasions throughout the process. They held a mandatory pre-proposal meeting, had eight firms to attend. Proposals were received, reviewed and scored. Um by the school, System Operations and Business Services. And uh this represents a total of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars guaranteed maximum price there. And and that's comprised of two. Uh sources of funding, over seventy six thousand dollars from fundraising that was done by the school. And over forty three thousand dollars uh from their after school program funds. And I just want to commend uh State M Elementary School. And and their staff, particularly um the committee that they had put together there, they did a tremendous job. A lot of hard work went into this. You know, we assisted and stepped in where we could. Um but. But but these folks just did a tremendous job uh contacting vendors, meeting with them, putting the scope of work together. Um and so I'll call out a few names here. Uh I may not get them all right, but um Nina Kirkpatrick, Faye De Loach. Jamie Prieto, Charlotte English, Milan Giuliano, Angela Rogers. Solerina Rattery, Lori Moore and Chrissy Benton. Um. Thank you all. I appreciate all your your hard work and um that's that's quite a feat there and. Something that uh, you know, takes a little load off of all these other things. We're trying to do with funding, so thank you.
Well, our folks oversee these.
Yes, sir. We we we've been involved and we'll stay with them. Right. Thank you.
All right, so we'll have our operations for committee to meet. Looks like Mr. Long and. Feeling Mr. Kelly is going to have our December school visits. So at this time, we will go into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action or dismissal. Or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee or to interview advocates for position of superintendent.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, yes.
All right. Thank you, guys.